All right, we're back. Let's go ahead and I think I saw Lisa on here. Are you with us, Lisa?
I think it's a no.
There she is.
Can you see me? I don't know why I don't hang up. You can hear me, but you can't. There you are.
There you are.
I'm learning team, sorry.
We all are. It's a process.
So I just have a brief item this morning. We need to establish a bank account for the Mason County Flexible Spending Account. And we're in a hurry to get this set up and going since it is going to have some transactions here in the next few days. So you did approve the account back in April. This is this opening bank account so that Navia can go in in debit and credit as necessary for those spending expenditures that employees sign up for. So we have opened an account with Amquah Bank. It's ready to go. We're just asking you today to approve that. And hopefully get it on your agenda for tomorrow.
Commissioners, sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me.
Right, perfect.
Good with me.
That's all I have today.
That was easy.
Have a good one.
Thanks, Lisa.
All right, well, just like that, we're on to Support Services. Mark?
Thanks, Commissioners, and a big thank you to Lisa Fraser for helping us get that set up with really short turnaround time. And I'm hopeful that it's going to be a good program for our employees that want to sign up for it and should be a good as part of increasing our total compensation package to help attract and retain employees. So we're going to start off with Diane talking about our current use taxation applications.
Morning Commissioners, so we're bringing forward the 2022 Current Use Taxation Applications. We have twenty-two of them. And we're asking that we set the hearing for July 18th. So that would be, and this would go on the June 20th meeting to set that hearing in July.
Great, good with me.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you. And then my next item is to talk about the July 3rd and 4th briefing and commission meetings. Because with the holiday there, you know, Tuesday's a holiday. So our code says then that the business meeting would fall to the next business day, which would be Wednesday, July 5th. But also, you know, in between there, we have that Monday. So I'm checking to see, does the board want to just carry on with that schedule? Do you want to reschedule? Cancel, I'm suggesting, do you want to cancel the June or July 3rd briefing? And either have the meeting July 5th or reschedule it to July 11th? So there's not too long of a gap without a commission meeting.
Right, so could we, because I know we've got a lot of items coming up too. Well, more than likely, we always do, right? So could we have maybe the briefing in the morning and then the commission meeting in the afternoon?
You can. And are you talking on July 5th?
On the 5th.
Okay.
Just my idea, Commissioners?
I'm definitely fine having the meeting on the 5th. And I, my calendar looks okay. It would be better to have the meeting and then the briefing, because I don't think we're going to move anything from the morning briefing to the afternoon agenda. I don't think that would be viable. So if we did the meeting at our normal time at 9:00 a.m. on Wednesday and then just went right into briefings, maybe that would be.
Yeah, I would stick with having the commission meeting at 9:00 because that is your typical time.
I agree with that.
Yeah, that works.
So we'll have a July 5th, 9:00 a.m. commission meeting. And then following that, any briefings that need to come forward, we'll go ahead and schedule those.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Diane. Jen, are you out there?
Yes, good morning. Sorry, I forgot what order we were in. So the 2024 Budget Rates is what I'm bringing to you first. So I have the draft rates in the packet. I'm not going to go over each one unless you would like, Commissioners. I just wanted to let you know that we have the internal cost allocations. They're being checked by TJ CPA. The 2024 Information Technology Rates have been ran by the IT Steering Committee. The State Auditor's Office charges, this is an estimate of what the the cost will be in '24 for our audit. A hundred and forty thousand is the total that we estimate each year for audit charges. Unemployment is a flat $200 per FTE, not including electeds. And then motor pool, we're estimating the cost for that. And I do have a slight change, not on the total rate, but just on the motor pool. I just wanted to point out that on the sheriff orders, we have changed those around a little bit. We had all interceptors listed, I believe, for the PPVs. And we're doing four interceptors and three F-150s for the police pursuit vehicles. So no dollar change there, but just wanted to point that out, that I'll be changing that on the rates that go out to all of the departments. So we're a little bit ahead of the game this year, so that's a good thing. Are there any questions on the rates?
Not for me.
No, it's a ton of work. Appreciate you doing it.
Yeah, it feels good to be a little bit ahead this year, so we can work on the chart of accounts more. So the only rate that I'm not presenting is ERNR, and that's being done by TJ CPA. And so that I would think would be, I'll be presenting that to you later on in the year. So the next thing that I have is the 2024 and 2025 Preliminary Budget Preparation Guidelines. So this is pretty standard language in the guidelines from the board. And I just wanted to bring it to you and see if you had any questions, comments, anything you want to add or clarify.
Nothing for me.
Yeah, you either.
And I'm hoping to get these approved on the 20th so that we can get them sent out. So departments can get a jumpstart on their 24 budget preparation. Typically, the call for, call for budgets goes out from the auditor's office on the second Monday in July. That's by RCW 3640010. And Leo and I usually coordinate a little bit early. The last couple of years, it's, the call for budgets has went out a little bit earlier than that. So I would assume that that would happen this year as well. And the auditor, of course. So with Steve, I'm hoping we can coordinate and get that out a little bit earlier. So that would be great to get a jumpstart on the budget. So we'll see.
Happy to help get it out early, Jennifer.
Awesome, thank you. So if there's no questions or comments, we'll move on.
Good.
Great, so we have, the next thing that I have is the 2023 CDBG Public Service Grant Amendment for the grant period of July 1st, 2023 through July, or through June 30th, 2024. And I'm asking if we can get this on tomorrow's agenda so that we can get the amendment approved by Commerce by the end of June. That's their deadline, where all parties have to have signed the amendment. So pretty standard grant, nothing new or unusual about it.
Looks good to me.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all that I have.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Mary, you're up with your MOU with AFSMI?
That was perfect timing because I just got off the phone. So we have an MOU coming through for requests to come on the Action Agenda to put in place with AFSMI for the addition of a lead worker. And I would like to add the language to the 2020 to 2022 Collecting Bargaining Agreement. Currently, there's an operational need and the agreement does not currently provide for this provision in the contract. And so that's what we'd like to move forward. And then the MOU is attached and approved as to form by, and the union has already signed it.
Yep, thank you for all the work on this.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. So the next item is talking about Zoom licenses. So we've kind of tried over the last few weeks, the difference between Zoom and Teams. I do think that in certain environments, we've found that Zoom is easier to work. So what, how we would move forward is that individual departments and offices that want to maintain a Zoom capability. So I think one of the examples would be our Commissioners' Office and our Commission Meetings. We could go back to using Zoom. I feel like just on previous meetings, especially some of our general meetings, I've seen more participation by the public when we had Zoom. I don't know that that is a Teams versus Zoom issue, but I'm a little bit concerned about it. So I haven't heard anything from the public that's came forward and said, hey, Teams isn't working for me. But just as addressing some of the issues that we have here internally with it. If we're having them, then the public may be having them. And Zoom tends to work better in a meeting where we're meeting with individuals outside of the county network. And so I would recommend that the Commissioners' Office maintain a Zoom license for our briefings and our regular meetings. And then other offices and apartments, like HR would be a good example. They have quite a few meetings that involve individuals sometimes outside the county environment. They would want to maintain a Zoom license too. So each one of those counties that want to maintain a Zoom license would pay an annual fee of $200.
I absolutely agree with you. I think we need to go back and make it as easy we can for the public. As you know, we even had a fire commissioner that attends all the time. I assume they sent the same email to everybody. If that fire commissioner is having problems, you know how much the public is. And I do know I've heard other things from the public as well. So I'm glad we're doing this, or I support it. And hopefully we will continue to go back to Zoom for them, just to keep it simple. I've actually gotten good with Teams, though. I will tell you, I actually like it. I just, but if it's that hard going in for us, it's got to be hard for somebody comes on brand new, wants to hear what the meeting's saying.
Yeah, I feel like the, I feel like the pictures, the video is much more crisp in Teams. So the quality of pictures that we have here is quite a bit better. So you guys all look really good this morning, but.
That's such a bore.
But, but I think that there is, I think that with that, you trade, you trade some of the response times in voice, right? So sometimes we'll see a lag, especially when we're talking with individuals that are outside of the county network. So, so yeah, Zoom, Zoom may work better for those meetings.
Well, I just know that for some of my state meetings, it's Zoom, but then others are Microsoft or Teams. And so it's, it's a combination for me. And, and I don't know, both are great and I am happy that we're sticking with both.
It's not a Teams issue, but if Commissioner Schudie adjusts his camera even a little bit more, all we'll have is his glasses.
Well, in that case.
Yeah, it keeps going up just a little bit of time. As long as you have that hat in the background, I'm happy. One day, I love that thing.
And we have, in one of my meetings, we have one commissioner that he sits, he looks like, oh shoot, what's that? The cat that looks over the, you know, this much up, and that's all you see of him. So it's just kind of funny.
Well, do you remember in our MTA, we had one of our board members that was always upside down? I never asked if that was on purpose of, or, you know, if that person was making a point, or I don't know.
So, so good. It sounds like we have some agreement with that and we'll move forward with that here. Working with TJ to make sure that those, June is the re-up of that license. And so TJ will work with those individual departments. I think a lot of them have already reached out to him to ask if they could maintain a Zoom license. So I feel like he has the data and he'll transition away from the contract that we're in to individual contracts. The next item that I have on here is the proclamation for the National LGBTQ+ Pride Month. And so that is presented to the board for discussion.
I think this one is much cleaner than the first one, and I appreciate that. I still, you know, believe that we should not be doing things like this on a regular basis. I think it, you know, elevating one group is not always my preference, but there's nothing in here that I would vote against. I think it's very respectable and respectful of all, all aspects. I do have a weird question, though. When did we switch and all our proclamations not be voted on? We're signing it, but yet we don't vote on it. It doesn't come up for the public to be able to, to discuss. Because remember, you know, something's on the agenda. And there's just no avenue for community input. Although I know this is the bad one to bring that up. You know, it's just with the positives and negatives that I've gotten. But I just was wondering that we probably should consider that somewhere, because if we're all signing something, there should be some process.
I know since I've been here, I've not, there's nothing that we've never voted on a proclamation because a proclamation is just an affirmation of, of, or a recognition, I guess, of something that somebody wanted to, a special event or like Public Works Week and things like that. Those are, those are just recognition or recognizing those dates as something. Not that they're not special, but we're just recognizing them as a commission. That's, that's my understanding of what a proclamation is.
Commissioners, yeah, we've always listed these and presented them under Item 4. And I mean, I guess the public could always pull off anything of the agenda if they want to talk about it.
No, not until the Action Agenda.
I think we have public comment, and that's when a lot of folks have commented on this before. So since I've been here, the party, whoever brought it forward, like Public Works, they would bring it forward. They ring it, read it. And during public comment, people could comment on, on that topic. I mean, granted, I've only been here five years, so.
Except for we tell them that only can comment on things that are not on the agenda.
I thought that was just the Action Agenda. Maybe we should just clarify when we're in the, in the meeting that nothing, you know, for the Action Agenda, there's no comment until that portion.
And I do, I do remember when Tim was here, way back when there was some controversial stuff that he. It's the fire commissioner I was talking about earlier. I do remember Tim having some issue and bringing it up for a vote. But again, I, I just was wondering about that, because if we sign it, it's not just a, if we sign it, it becomes the identity of the county. It is an action by us, or we wouldn't be signing it.
Yeah, it's a recognition. So maybe what I'll do is, is coming, you know, when we have our meetings, I'll just say that things that are on the Action Agenda. I believe I say that, but maybe I don't.
I don't think any of us do it. It's okay. If you do it, that's smart for all of us to start doing in the future. I know myself, even all the years, I just said, on the agenda.
So if we put it in Item 4 and, and it goes under Correspondence in that item, and the commission presents it as something that you're all three going to sign, then Section 5 is where the citizens have an opportunity to provide input. So I think that if we have individuals that would like to comment on that, I think that that would be an avenue or a time period during that meeting where they could make those comments. But, but I also understand if you'd like to move it under an Action Item Agenda, that's something that we could just push it down into one of those items.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm comfortable with just leaving it under Item 4 as one of our, you know, A, B, C, or D's.
Probably, I think proclamations in a sense are, are up there because as we go through our Action Agenda, we read a summary statement. So you may only see the summary statement side of that. But when we're making a proclamation, usually a proclamation or a news release is actually read out loud during the correspondence section. And so maybe that's the difference of where it was located, I'm guessing. But happy to, happy to put it wherever you'd like to see that. So moving on to Administrator Updates, just wanted to let the commission know that we are moving forward with the purchase of 126 Neeland property. So I've asked Commissioner Netherland to sign off on those documents. The board approved the purchase of this property months ago. And we're finally getting through the whole process now where the transaction can be finalized. And, and just wanted to remind you all that that already has been approved and that we are moving forward. So I'll be asking the Auditor's Office to get us a check, or I'll talk with Lisa and see if she wants to wire the money to the. What does it go to, Randy? The title company?
Yes, well, the title company, then they send it out to the buyers, sellers, realtors, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
They separate it all out.
Just to remind the Commissioners, the details of that agreement is we did make a full price offer on that piece of property with the understanding that the sellers would pay for all of the closing costs and all of the studies that need to be done. And that's what they agreed to. So we did put down some earnest money, and I think we have a, the remaining balance is 540, some, some odd thousand. So I will be working with the Auditor's Office or the Treasurers to get that, to get that warrant or wire set up. And we can purchase the property and Kelly and his staff can start working out there.
And our, our coroner.
And, and, and start to move for the coroner, yeah. So Kelly and his staff have some work that they need to do to get it set up for that. The coroner will probably be coming back to the Commissioners to talk about a cooler that she'd like to purchase. And so you'll see some items come forward with that. But once, once we have possession of it, then we can really get to work on it. And I know that our facility staff and the coroner are super excited to, to be able to utilize this new warehouse facility.
Yeah, super excited because she's going to have a permanent spot finally, and, and, and a cooler. We've had to, it's going to be a savings for the county because we've, we've had to rent spaces and, and other counties are making money off of us. So it's about, I think it's, it's a good move for Mason County.
Yeah, she still have to, she'll still have to contract out for any autopsy services or pathology, I think they call it. Because we don't have those resources internal to Mason County, or we don't have an individual contract specific to Mason County. But definitely the storage side of that is, is, is an expense that we'll quickly pay back the cost of installing a cooler. So excited to see that. That's all I had for you guys.
All right, do we have any Commissioner discussion, or do we want to save that for the end?
Just one statement on this. I hope anybody out in the public that is looking at the proclamation will read it before they, they speak. See what's actually in it compared to what I'm being told is in it, even though I'm reading it and I, it's not in there.
Yep. All right. If we have nothing right now, we'll just go ahead and move on into Cal. Is Cal online?
Good morning.
There she is. Hello.
Yeah, so just a reminder, I briefed earlier, but we are doing an all-staff meeting regarding SmartGov training next Tuesday. So our office will be closed. The Permit Assistant Center will be closed all day on Tuesday, June 13th. And we have invited folks from Environmental Health and Public Works to join us as well, but they will not be closing their offices. And so, yeah, just a reminder on that.
Very cool. I'm excited to see SmartGov moving forward. I think it's, it's a benefit. I think the county, people are going to enjoy it a lot more, I think.
Yeah, we've been doing a lot of work on cleaning it up and getting prepared to get additional permits available online for, you know, being able to apply online. So just, I call it weeding, or weeding around the flowers. So.
All right, any questions or anything to help?
Yeah, Commissioners, just one quick item. So if you recall, a couple of briefings ago, I had asked for consent from the commission to work on some code changes with Cal regarding less restrictive housing alternatives for sex offenders in the community. So Cal and I have been having some conversations about that. I think we have, she has some draft code that maybe she's able to share with us, future briefing. But just wanted to let you know that we have been working on it. It seems like things are kind of coming together. And hopefully we can have something for you to review and send off to the planning commission here in the next, in the next couple of weeks.
That's exciting because I know that, that bill that was going forward, there was some vetoing by the governor on that. So the more the county can have control, the better.
Look forward to seeing him. I don't have any issue with reviewing anything early if you wouldn't mind sending it out. I think it would be good to have.
I'll be ready to send in a briefing this, you know, Wednesday for next Monday.
Excellent. Appreciate you working on that, Cal.
Yep, no problem.
Yep, thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Schudie also.
Yep, thank you.
Anything else we help? All right, Cal. Thanks, see you later. Well, Loretta?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So first up, Commissioners, we have a sledge hauling request for proposals. And Richard can share some more detail on this exciting proposal.
Maybe. Well, I thought I saw Richard here. Okay, well, I'm happy to share some exciting information about this. And we look forward to that.
Yeah, long story short, we contract for services to haul sludge from our wastewater treatment facilities. And this is something we do anywhere from two to four times a year. And the contract that we have right now, we receive notice from the contractor that they will no longer be providing those services. And notice was received per the terms of the contract. So what we are asking Commissioners to approve is for us to be able to go out and, and select another, a new sledge hauler.
Good with me. Yep, same.
All right, great. We'll go to it.
And then. And then, uh, next up, under discussion items, commissioners, we had another wildly successful fill the truck event. And, um, the, the belfare community rounded up 783 pounds of, um, food to be, uh, donated, 90 pounds of toiletries and just a little over $700 in cash. So really, really exciting. Um, Commissioner, thank you for your help and support, of course, up in the north end. The, the crew, it's something that they very much, um, enjoy and appreciate your help with that as well. Shelton location, we had also a great success, 560 pounds, um, five pounds of toiletry or five bags of toiletries, 48 bottles of water, 115 in cash and a booster seat for some kiddos. So big, huge shout out and thanks to the community and all who shared and, and made this happen. Much appreciated.
And Loretta, shout out to them. Uh, they don't just enjoy having me there. They enjoy doing it. They really honestly do. Uh, the interaction that they have with the community when they're there receiving these things is so wonderful to watch. I love being there and being a part of watching them and helping them however I can. Uh, I'm impressed with our crew. I, I, I say that full throated because I'm telling you, when I watch their interaction, you can see how much they're also respected in the community. And that alone is a gift. When you have, uh, your public works people respected the way they are.
Yes.
A lot to be proud of.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, uh, you know, you, you take it for granted, right? You, you do your thing, you do your job, um, and the community does say thank you. This is just another way of recognizing and saying thanks to the, the crews as well. So you bet. Very rewarding.
Yeah, they're also incredibly generous and, and, you know, giving their, their time and their effort. And that's a reflection of our community too. And I think the numbers show that we have an incredibly generous community that never hesitates to step up to help people in need. So this is just a great opportunity for everybody to come together and, and support some really worthwhile causes. So big hat tip to the whole crew.
Yep. I know Turning Point truly appreciates that this, or the, the, the donations from the, from the community and also from, from the county for the, the people that work. And you've got amazing people out there. So on behalf of Turning Point, I'd like to thank you, but on behalf of, um, me, I would like to thank every other community and, and the folks that, that man the trucks.
Good deal. Well, I saw Richard pop on, so, uh, if you do have any other follow-up questions, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer. Uh, other things, solid waste work plan? I think we talked about this last briefing a bit, but happy to share with you a little bit more about what we're up to this year regarding the solid waste program. There's a, a big emphasis, as you know, on, um, reducing contamination in our recyclables. So that's been a, a focus. We've been, um, very thankful for our Department of Ecology partners being able to participate with our, our, um, our advisory committee and share information and share resources to get us all on the good track to, to reduce our contamination in recyclables. The other big initiative that continues, we're hoping to finally wrap up the, the closure of the old landfill. So, um, doing some of the decommissioning work there and collecting the last of the, the monitoring information so that we can close that out. And we're also preparing for the update for the solid waste management plan. And what other fun things, Richard, are hot on our priorities?
You know, I think you got most of it, but I, I'm really, uh, hopeful and, uh, happy, just hopeful, I guess, for the closure. And getting that work completed and, and over with. It just kind of feels like it keeps dragging on. So that'll be an anchor I'd like to shed this year for sure. Um, yeah, there's no shortage of work to do out there. Um, just getting a good plan together, uh, getting that, uh, solid waste management plan, updated the capital portion of it right away. Uh, looking forward to it.
I would encourage people to go to, I think it's on our website, um, for a list of all the recyclables and examples. I think that is such a valuable resource. Um, I've got mine posted on right by ours, our recycle, just so that the grandkids and everybody else knows what they can and, and should be putting in there and what they shouldn't be putting in there.
Yep.
So I, it's a, um, SWAT has a good team.
Yeah, they do.
Got valuable members on there.
Yes.
People definitely smees, you know, subject matter, matter experts. They're doing a great job, I think.
Wow. And then commissioners, I sent an email earlier about the upcoming utility meetings or meetings with homeowners association to talk about our water and sewer utilities. So June 22nd is the Beards Cove Homeowners Association meeting. June 27th is the Lakeland Village Association meeting. And July 9th will be Russellwood. And we still need to schedule a meeting up in, um, belfare to talk about the belfare rates and one that is more universal to cover North Bay as well. So I will follow up and take a look at calendars and see what works, um, and go from there.
Can you send those dates to us?
Yes, I did send those, uh, this morning, Commissioner. Hopefully, it probably just hasn't landed in your email yet.
Or, or I haven't even looked at my email since I sent.
That's right. That's right.
Hey Loretta, this is, this is Steve. I'd like to get it, I'd like to attend some of those meetings if possible too, as crazy as that sounds. And so if you kindly send me the information, I would truly appreciate it.
Absolutely. I will do that.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you for wanting to participate. And I think that is about it for us.
Okay, commissioners, do we have any, do you have anything for Loretta?
Just to thank you again, and thank you for setting those things up so we can start to get an interaction going with that. Uh, this is where it begins. Uh, I'll, I'll try to be there at each of them also to get, uh, and take my, my lashes as necessary.
Well, we did hear from the Lakeland Village community that they can't wait.
I have no doubt about that.
Which they've in the past have had really great suggestions and questions. And so this is a nice opportunity to, to follow up.
All right, Commissioner Shutey, anything?
Nope, nothing for me.
All right. I have nothing either.
I, thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Loretta. All right, commissioners, we're down to discussion if we need it.
I don't have anything.
A little higher. We'll just get the blank look on the, there we go. I don't have anything either. I'm ready.
Commissioner Netherland, I'm just not sure what you're seeing because I see the full face.
Really? Well, I do now. He said, he set up a little, but when he was leaning back, all I was seeing was his nose at above.
Really?
Yeah.
That's funny.
That is what you see, huh? Okay. That's what I was saying, uh, when he's leaning back any further, I'll always be seeing just his glasses across his glasses.
You and your computers. That's all I gotta say. All right. Well, commissioners.
Oh, move, we adjourned. Sorry. I guess she was waiting for that.
All right. Well, we're adjourned and we'll see everybody back here at 9:00 AM tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.